Are you prepared? We're the Office of Emergency Services and we're committed to providing the most up-to-date and accurate information so that you and your family can stay safe during an emergency.
Part of being prepared is knowing your hazards and taking proper precautions. Visit MendoReady.org. On the Know Your Hazard page, you can find hazards for where you work, where you live, and where your kids go to school. On the Plan and Prepare page, you'll find a plan template. It's important to know what you're going to do, what you're going to take with you, how you're going to communicate, where you're going to go, and how to get there.
One great way to prepare is to pack a go-bag. Each member of your family should have their own go-bag. Visit our website, MendoReady.org, to get a list of items that should be in your go-bag.
Gathering and organizing important documents before an emergency is an important part of preparedness. So visit MendoReady.org today, where you can find a list of important documents that you should have ready near your go-bag in case you have to evacuate.
Not every emergency requires people to evacuate. An emergency kit will have supplies for you to remain self-sufficient for 72 hours. Find a list of supplies for disaster kits on our website, MendoReady.org.
A prepared community is a resilient community that will recover faster from disasters. So take some time today, visit our website, get yourself prepared, so you can be Mendo-ready.
A beautiful, clean river doesn't start here. It starts here. What we put down our storm drains goes straight from our streets into our local creeks. Simple changes can make a big impact. Like when you wash your car, the best solution is washing at a professional car wash. But if you wash at home, divert wash water to an area where it can soak into the ground, like a planer strip. Also, empty your bucket of dirty wash water in the sink. The wash water will make its way to the treatment plant, where it is cleaned. You probably know how to pick up your pet's poo when you're out on a wall. After all, it's the neighborly thing to do. But what about the pet waste in your backyard? Pick it up regularly, and especially before rain or irrigation water washes any of it into a backyard drain. Your pet's poo is full of bacteria and nutrients that can contaminate our creeks. Scoop the poo, bag it, and put it in your garbage. When tending to your yard or garden, check the weather and prevent over-irrigation. Run-off of fertilizer, herbicides, landscape materials, compost piles, and leaf debris pollute our creeks. Remember, timing is everything. Pick up any litter or trash that may get into the streets. If you grab it before water or wind arrives, it doesn't have a chance of ending up in our creeks. It's up to each of us to take care of our creeks and rivers. They're ours to protect. Find out more at StreetsToCreeks.org.
Yes, real quick, real quick. Okay, all right. Let's just pretend that never happened. Here we go, let's start. I'm going to call to order today's meeting of the Planning Commission. Madam Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call?
Commissioner Wedeman?
Here.
Commissioner Richards?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Vice Chair Paulin?
Here. All right, item, agenda number two. Do we have proper notice for today's?
All items on the agenda have been properly noticed.
All right, thank you. Agenda item number three, Director's Report. We have a report from the Director today.
Good morning, Commissioners. Julia Crogg, Planning and Building Services Director. So a brief report for you, just updating you on two different items. So the first is that, at the beginning of October, the Mendocino Cannabis Department merged with the Department of Planning and Building Services. So we're going to be working through that transition, and members of the public shouldn't see any difference in terms of how our operations are, but we'll be integrating in the Cannabis Division into Planning and Building Services. And then the second update is to let you all know that we'll soon be releasing a request for proposals for our Housing Element and Environmental Justice Element, and we expect that to go out sometime next month, and that'll be a work product for us for about the next year and a half.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for the Director? All right, thank you. All right, moving on. Agenda item number four, Matters from the Public. Members of the public are welcome to address the Planning Commission on items not listed on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Planning Commission is prohibited by law from taking action on matters not on the agenda. Individuals wishing to address the Planning Commission under Matters from the Public may do so in person, via email, or Zoom. If there's any members of the public that are logged into the Zoom meeting who wish to speak under public expression, please use the raise hand feature to allow staff to add you to the meeting. Do we have any requests for telecomment under public expression?
We have not received any requests for telecomment.
You. Are there any members in the room who wish to speak under public comment on items not on the agenda? All right, seeing no one come up, do we have anyone in Zoom who wishes to speak?
There are no hands raised in Zoom.
Okay, great, moving on then. Agenda item number five, this is the Consent Calendar. We will be approving the Planning Commission meetings from the September 4, 2025 meeting. Do any Commissioners have any comments on the consent calendar? Any comments from the public on the consent calendar? No one on Zoom?
No one on Zoom.
I guess I do have a question.
Oh, great.
Sorry. I don't actually see the minutes as part of the upload. I'm not sure we can approve them. Is that right?
You're correct.
Yeah, yeah, right.
So that item will be moved to the next agenda?
We'll table that one until the next time we meet, in three or four months from now. All right. Just kidding, we'll be together soon. All right, well then, moving on to Agenda Item Number Six, this is the regular calendar. Our first item is 6A. This is UR_2024-0004-Wildwood. This is the renewal of a use permit, U30-72, for transient habitation, campground, which would allow for 73 campsites, a manager's quarters office, and two restrooms and shower facilities with a maximum of 45 campsites featuring septic hookups. It would grant new permit expiration date of 10 years from the date of the original approval. I'll open the public hearing at this point. Have there been any correspondence or telephone calls received on this item?
We have not received any correspondence for this item.
All right, thank you very much. All right, we'll then move to the staff presentation.
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, everyone. Russ Ford, Project Planner. This is project application UR2024-0004, which is a request to renew an existing use permit to continue to allow transient habitation campground at the Wildwood Campground Facility in Fort Bragg. The project is located 3.8 miles southeast of Fort Bragg on the north side of State Route 20 at 29,700 West Highway 20. It is in the Fort Bragg area but is not within the regulatory coastal zone. The project site is about four miles east of the Pacific Ocean and consists of a 68-acre site that is mostly covered by coastal forest. About 10 acres of the site adjacent to the highway has been developed into the campground facility, which includes 73 campsites, 45 of which have septic capability. There's also a permanent onsite residence used as the manager's quarters, an office, and two restrooms with showers for use by guests. The facility also includes road, water, and septic improvements and signage as required by CAL FIRE and the Mendocino County Code. The site has an extensive history, going back to the original application in 1972, which included the development of an RV park and campground. That permit was approved in 1973 for a term of 20 years. In 1993, the renewal application included a proposed two-phase development that would have added an additional 101 primitive campsites, which is those without septic capacity, in addition to the existing 73 developed sites. This renewal was approved in 1993 for a term of 20 years. In 2013, the facility was once again up for renewal, but had developed a number of health, safety, and compliance issues over the two previous terms. These included a failing septic system that was underrated for capacity at which it was being used, improper disposal of rubbish and waste on-site, a number of abandoned and inoperative vehicles throughout the site, and improper use of sites for long-term occupancy, including trailer units that were no longer mobile, having fixed improvements attached to them and being connected to semi-permanent utilities. Consequently, this permit renewal included a number of additional conditions intending to bring the facility back into compliance and was approved for a limited term of five years. It also removed the previously approved second phase of the development, which had never been undertaken. Following renewal in 2019 confirmed that the remedial conditions in the previous renewal had been successfully completed, and the site had been largely restored to compliance. None of the previous conditions were carried forward, so the 2019 renewal acted as a bit of a clean slate for the project and was renewed for another term of five years. The previous renewal expired on June 1, 2024, and a renewal application was submitted by the operator in May of 2024. The only modification to the project is a request to extend the renewal period to a term of 10 years. All other elements of the project will remain as-is. If the Commission supports the 10-year term, the new expiration date will be June 1, 2034. The SEQA determination for the original use permit in 1973 was a negative declaration. The next several renewals reference that neg-dec for their SEQA compliance, but due to the time elapsed since the original approval, staff has prepared an addendum to that original neg-dec for this renewal. Adoption of an addendum is consistent with SEQA for situations in which there are no substantial changes to the project, there are no changes in circumstance which would require revisions to the negative declaration, and there is no new information of substantial. Staff has prepared a draft resolution for the project, but we have a number of changes and corrections to that that I'd like to review first. So, up on screen. Okay, so on screen, you see the draft resolution. There are no recommended changes to the findings. So in the conditions of approval, Condition Four has been updated to reflect current language regarding revocation and modification grounds, which was adopted with the zoning code update last year. Condition Six is updated to include a reference to the original use permit renewal, 30-72 of 92. Condition 10B has been revised at the request of the Division of Environmental Health to read every three years. The property owner shall schedule site inspections with the Division of Environmental Health to inspect the non-standard septic and leach fields to ensure the system is being maintained and sufficient. Condition 11A has been revised to include reference to the use permit renewal, 2013-02. Condition 13 has been corrected to reference Chapter 5.20 rather than 5.20. Condition 17 has been revised to correct the reference to 20.164, which is in Division 1 rather than the Division 2 code. Condition 21 has been revised to read annually and beginning on January 1, 2021, "The property owner shall demonstrate to the Director of Planning and Building Services that any inspections required by the California Department of Housing and Development, HCD, have been completed to the satisfaction of HCD." Condition 22 has been revised to incorporate the full statute reference. Condition 23 has been revised to read, "In part, an updated campground management plan prepared by the property owner shall be submitted to the Department of Planning and Building Services for approval and filing within 90 days of project approval." And then Condition 23A3 has been revised to read, "Pet owners shall dispose of pet feces," part of the campground management plan. And then finally, we have the addition of Condition 26, which reads, "All existing long-term residential units shall be brought into compliance with state and local regulations within one year of permit approval by obtaining any required permits, removing the units, or converting them to an allowed use." And with that, staff is recommending approval of the project per the revised resolution and available for questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for staff from Commissioners?
I have a couple of comments, and I'm happy--
I don't think your mic's on still.
My mic is on.
There we go, okay.
All right, I'm not swallowing the mic, I guess.
Yeah, really get up on it.
So I did go out onto the site both yesterday and this morning, because it's very close. I mean, I'm three miles from where I live. I'm on my way here, and it does look like there are a couple of camping units or trailers that have been there for a while, just by kind of all the stuff that's around them and how much moss there is growing on the roof, if that's a way you can indicate such things. And I was wondering if that's what you were referring to in the last special condition?
Correct, yeah. It's our understanding that there are a couple of semi-permanent structures out there being used as long-term residences. There are a couple of permitting options for those, depending on how the campground operator would like to proceed. They could also be removed, so we wanted to provide options to come into compliance, whatever way worked best for them.
Got it. And then I did email you a question about compliance with HCD, and my understanding is that HCD regulates like mobile home parks, not campgrounds. And so you're leaving that in, is that because you're wanting to give them room to start a mobile home park? I'm just trying to understand.
So Russ Ford, Planning and Building Services. Per the HCD website, Wildwood Campground is actually considered a special occupancy park. So, and that is defined as, "A park in any area of land or property that has at least two recreational vehicles, tents, camping cabins, and/or lots that are held out for rent or lease." The Wildwood would qualify under that. I do believe that the recent approval of Assembly Bill 518 has changed that to nine or more, meaning that anything less than nine would not be regulated by the state. That doesn't affect Wildwood, but it does open the pathway for the county's local low-impact camping org.
And then my last question, having managed one of these facilities in the past, a big issue is how many campers there are in each site in terms of occupancy load for the septic tank, septic system. I didn't see any limitation on number of campers per site, and I was wondering if in the environmental review that was identified? Like, is there a maximum load for the septic system, I guess is what I'm asking?
Russ Ford, Planning and Building Services. I'm sure there is. The, I spoke with environmental health staff this morning, and because the permit system for the campground is a non-standard permit, it actually has its own separate set of conditions which must be complied with. I don't know what the occupancy load is, but I'm certain it's part of that condition.
And then my last question is for the applicant when they get up. I was wondering if you have like rules, signs at the campground, or any way of informing the campers of how to behave properly? Because there's a history at this campground that is not very good in terms of campers and long-term residences' behavior in the community, and so I'd just like you to talk about that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from Commissioners for staff? Okay, thank you very much. And we'll actually, we'll invite the applicant to give a presentation now. The applicant like to come up and please speak directly into the microphone and state your name for the record, and so people who aren't here can hear you. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. My name is Travis Sanning. I am the Operations Manager and Business Partner of the new business out there.
Mr. Sanning, I'm sorry, if you would be willing to speak more closely to the microphone, I know it's--
Sorry, is that better?
Yes.
Okay.
I can hear you, but if people aren't in the room, they won't be able to hear you if you're not on the microphone.
Okay, so basically, I'll go over all of your concerns with the septic systems and stuff like that. Each septic system has its own permit. I understand your concern about the history of the campground, new management team, new ownership of the company. Our focus is not full-time residents. It took us a little, actually 12, 13 months longer to complete the task of turning it back into a transient special occupancy park and a lot of work. I brought with me receipts on all the dump fees. We've spent approximately $25,000 in cost at the Willits Transfer Station over the last three years to clean this place up. Removing the trailers that were abandoned and everything else. Our mission is, is we want to be in the tourist business. Our first year, since we took over the operations from Lee, we did $76,000 in transient camping. So that was in 2023, which $7,600 went to the county in transient hotel tax. 2024, we did $129,000 in transient camping. So we put roughly, you know, almost $13,000 into the county economy. This is the number that completely blows me away. In 2025, year-to-date, you know, we've done $182,000 year-to-date in transient camping. All of our revenue is coming from tourism and people coming to the area that want to spend money in the community. We've joined the Better Business Bureau. All of our, when we took over, the reviews were one star. It was a very dangerous place. Now, we've got the Google reviews up to 4.1, and we're overcoming all of those old things and way-to-do businesses. The sewer concerns and stuff, they've all, they're all up to date, they're all permitted, all three permits. I do have those permit numbers if the Board would like those as well. I can, I have them right here in front of me if you would like that to go on record. We have, the first system is ST28912, and that permit is good for two campsites, which would be the management quarters, okay? That was installed and signed off by Carl Riddeman. The second permit number is ST6106. That is the sewer plant that will handle the 45 sites up front. There are 10 sites that go to ST26105. That's the final sewer plant permit, and that handles 10 sites. So it gives us a total of 45 with sewer capabilities. We've still got eight sites or whatever to finish renovating. We've rocked all the sites, you know, we're trying to get the entire property debris-free and erase what has happened in the last 53 years. So we're going in a direction that we want to be in business with the county. We're not a mobile home park. We want to be in the transient camping business, and I'm hoping that we increase our camping revenue by 50% in 2026. And I think that it will be, end up being a great partnership with the county. Are there any more questions that you have for me? Thank you for touring us, by the way.
Oh, sure. Well, I just knew it from back in the day where I had a really bad reputation, so I was like, I need to really drive out there and look at it myself to see what's going on there. You, your rules for the campers?
They're posted outside at the office. They are on our website. It states that all campers must pick up any pet feces, all dogs have to be on leashes, 10 o'clock quiet time, check-ins, you know, 1 o'clock checkout, or 2 o'clock checkouts, noon. I mean, it goes through the basic general rules that you would check in, that you have when you go into a campground. And, I mean, it's, it's exciting. I mean, it's exciting. We're happy to be here.
Can you also provide me with a little bit of information about how you deal with trash and animals?
The, the feral animals that were left by the residents, I got with Amy in Mendocino at the animal shelter and we, and Coast Cat Project, we trapped all the feral cats, and, and they've been home by Mendocino County Animal or Humane Society and the Coast Cat Project. The trash, we've been, we have recycling container in a fenced area and a trash container in a fenced area, and then any trash that's came off of the property, I personally hauled between, behind my dually truck and a dump trailer and have went, and it all goes to the Willits Transfer Station. In 2023, we spent $5,823 to remove trash. In 2024, we spent--
I got it, you don't have to go into the details.
Okay, I'm just trying to give you accurate documents. I'm sorry to waste your time.
No, you're not wasting it.
But--
It's nice to know you're dug in and you got it under control.
I'm very OCD about trash, okay? And--
The last managers were not.
Well, it's, it's to, you know, it's to the point to where we want the kids riding their bicycles around the property. We want the families coming in and roasting hot dogs and marshmallows and doing the camping thing and enjoying our beautiful county. So that's our mission, and we're not going to back up on it. I mean, we're going to go further and do better. We're going to be a vendor for the tickets for the skunk train, and we're getting involved with the local businesses at a rapid rate. So, you know, our goal is to be the best. Hopefully, we get there soon. So, any other questions for us?
Commissioner Wedeman?
No, thank you for your report and thank you for your work. You know, I also live on the coast and I know the location and its past, and that's, it's, it's a change, big change.
Well, in the Sheriff's Department even, we've, we've got in close ties with local law enforcement. When we first took over the management and the ownership of the new company, I mean, in like 18 months or something, or 22 months, there was 500 and some calls to the local Sheriff's Department to come out there, and I don't think we've had two or three in the, in the last year or so. I made a call to them over somebody that came in in the middle of the night and didn't self-check and drove out and didn't pay, but there's not the crime, the drug use, the drug dealers coming by. That environment's gone, and we're in the camping business. So, and excited to be there.
Thank you. Commissioner Richards, do you have any questions? Okay, great. All right, well, thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, we'll now open this for public comment. We'll take public comment on this item, either from people in the room or on Zoom. When you're called to speak, please state your name for the record, and public comment is limited to three minutes per person. Speakers are asked to please address their comments to the meeting chair and to refrain from using profanity or engaging in conversation with members of the audience or staff. of the audience or staff. Do we have anyone in the room who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one rushing the microphone, do we have anyone on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, then. Well, then, do we have any final remarks from staff?
Nothing from us. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Any final remarks from the applicant? You're welcome. Thank you. Do we have any additional questions from any commissioners?
I have a comment.
Great.
Sorry.
No, no.
So I like the provision 11, that provisions of lodging services shall be less than a monthly basis. I'd like to add a, and I recognize you're a new manager, but just to keep anything from going awry in the future, just a comma, and no camper will be permissible, no camping will be permissible from one camper for two months or more in a year, because I just worry that people will like go off for a day and then come back for a month and go off for a day. But maybe that's not the scene now. It's just
You may, yes.
We have been supporting the local business for the construction and stuff like that. So we do have occasional traveling nurses that work at the hospital. We, we, they're, they're on a 20-day, 28-day cycle. We have construction workers that come in there and they stay 28 days during the month. But that's our idea of long-term residence.
So then do they leave for a day and come back?
They leave, they usually leave on Thursday and come back the next week. Some of them go to another campground for the next 28-day cycle. That's the kind of business, as long as it benefits the community, and it's not over 28 days, that's our program. There is no 30-day. We want to be, we want to reserve the right to have those people legally removed and not go over a 30-day period, because after 30 days, then legally, somebody comes, becomes a resident. Traveling nurses, construction workers, they, they can't, they don't even qualify to do that if they, if they don't have a home address that they go home to on the weekend. And that's our idea of that. So not trying to be landlords, trying to be campground owner. So. Does that answer the question?
It does.
Okay.
It still makes me a little queasy to just leave it less than a monthly basis, because I just think you end up with serial residents who are just moving out for the weekend and then coming back. And maybe that's fine with the rest of the planning commissioners. I just think the history of that property has been so problematic.
And I agree with you, and I would like you to leave it on the less than monthly basis.
So at some point, the hearing closes and we're just talking to each other.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. And then my other concern is around the number of trailers per campsite. So when I was out there, there were a couple of campsites that had more than one trailer, and I think that's also a little bit problematic, which is why, you know, most, I'm surprised we don't have a maximum occupancy per site, frankly. Like Drug Handle, we had eight people per site. You could never have more than eight people, no matter what. And if you had more than eight people, you guess what? You had to rent two sites. So I do feel like I'd like to see a max, maximum occupancy here. I'd be fine with eight sites. And then I'd also like to have a maximum number of trailers that are allowed per campsite. And I don't know if that's two or one, but I just think that he's fine with one. So we'll just leave it at one trailer per campsite. So maybe we can add that to the conditions and then also add a max, maximum occupancy per campsite of eight people. And I would like us to consider not allowing people to multiply monthly camp there, but I also understand the need for it. So I'm not going to die on that vine. And I guess that is it for my thoughts. If anybody likes what I brought up, feel free to echo.
Commissioner Riedemann?
I actually like that, the 28 days, because it does serve a purpose, especially traveling nurses. And it does offer two things, a bit of housing, right, short-term housing, but it's housing. And it's had that capability for years, and I think that's important, besides just the, more or less, the campground rentals, right? So I, I support that 28 days. I think it's a, has a good use, and it's a needed use. That's what I wanted to say.
There's some clear, so you, you think you're okay with the current protocol that they're using with the 28 days? Okay, great. Thank you. Commissioner Richards?
Find that button.
Mostly for words.
I would just add that as long as they don't move into landlord, in a landlord area, this is fine with me. That's, that's a whole other bailiwick. I'm sure they want to move. So do we.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, given the need for short-term housing, for traveling nurses and people that are doing construction in the community, it does seem to make sense in their protocol, seems to protect the integrity of not becoming a long-term, de facto trailer park. Were there conditions that you wanted to see specifically, Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I'd like to see under 11E to add an F. No more than one trailer per campsite, and maximum occupancy of eight people per campsite. I just think it helps limit the growth that could happen in the summer when you've got extra reservations and you just need to shove people someplace.
Right. And it seemed like the applicant would be all right with that provision being added.
If I may too, I think it might be worthwhile just to double-check with the applicant too, because there are some group sites that are shown on
You could do the exception of the group sites.
With the exception of group sites, yeah, because there are a number of those shown on the site plan as well.
There's two, yeah.
Okay. Do we need a few minutes to make those changes and then come back and review it and eventually vote? Okay.
Yes, please. Staff would request about five minutes.
Five minutes? All right. It is 10:32. How about I give you eight minutes? We'll come back at 10:40. All right. Back in session. Mayor Ford, do you have some proposed language to show us?
Russ Ford, Planning and Building Services. So we have a draft edition of Condition 11F, which reads, "Each campsite shall be limited to a maximum occupancy of eight individuals and one trailer or recreational vehicle, with the exception of approved camp, group campsites, as shown on the campground site map, referenced as Figure 1 of the staff report for UR 24 before."
Commissioner Jones, does that meet your needs? Okay, great. All right, then. Let's see. I'll invite a motion then.
Since it's in my district, right, now, of course, you know, I don't have the resolution right in front of me. I'm going to get it there. So I move that we adopt the resolution of the Planning Commission, County of Mendocino, State of California, adopting an addendum to the previously adopted negative declaration and the granting of a use permit renewal for a transient habitation campground land use, subject to the changes executed at the meeting.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion. Second, any further discussion?
Thanks for cleaning it up.
Yeah. All right. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Riedemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Richards?
Yes.
Vice Trip Holland?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Very much. All right, moving on. Item, I guess this is 6B. This is a presentation from staff on the local coastal plan process. Can we have the presentation, please?
Sorry, had to find my mute button. Julia Crogg, Planning and Building Services Director. So I'm going to walk you through a brief presentation that I have prepared, and this item is certainly for the commission to ask any questions that they may have of staff regarding our local coastal program update, which we are in full swing of. Some of this information is going to be repeat from the last time that we were in front of the commission, just to make sure that you have a well-rounded review of sort of where we are and what we're working on and the grants that we obtained that have led to this work. So let me go ahead and get started. So generally, the LCP update process is outlined on this slide, and we started with obviously a grant getting awarded by the California Coastal Commission. We spent quite a bit of time in our administrative process, which was preparing and executing the grant agreement, and then preparing requests for proposals for consultants, scoring those proposals, and then actually preparing contracts for those consultants and getting Board of Supervisors approval for those consultants. We have technical studies that are currently underway with numerous consultants, and I'll dive into each one of those in a little bit here. And each one of those tasks includes a certain level of stakeholder engagement, engagement prior to finalizing the studies. Another piece as part of this update is policy and code drafting, and that also will include a component of stakeholder engagement. We'll be starting with the LCP policies, and then once those policies are largely feeling firm and have gone through a review with the public as well, then we will begin drafting updates to the zoning code, or as it's referred to under the LCP, the implementation program. We will also be holding public hearings with the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors. And then ultimately, the final step for the grant is that we submit our LCP amendment to the Coastal Commission. The current grant termination date is December 31, 2026, but we have been in discussions with the commission about doing a grant agreement amendment to extend that termination date into 2027. And that's just because there's been a few delays with some of the study work that we've been working on, including the need to revise a couple scopes of work, which is something that I'll get to in a few minutes here, too. And then we also just are trying to give a little bit more time for completing the required environmental analysis as well. So we have received two different grants. So I'm going to start with the larger grant. So we received a round eight grant award from the Coastal Commission, and that was almost $2.2 million awarded to us in 2022 with a county match of $200,000. We then prepared the request for proposals, which were for a coastal groundwater study consultant, a state Route 1 traffic highway and capacity consultant, visual and archaeological resources, biological resources, and habitat and natural resources consultant, and then finally, a sequoque consultant. The awarded contracts or vendors for these different studies are shown on this slide. You see, we have Larry Walker and Associates for the groundwater study, TJKM Transportation Consultants for the state Route 1 capacity study, and EMC Planning Consultants for the state Route 1 capacity study, and EMC Planning for visual and archaeological resources, WRA for biological resources, habitats and natural resources, and again, EMC Planning for the California Environmental Quality Act compliance. I also wanted to let the commission know that we've recently added a new tab on our main page, our main landing page for Planning and Building Services. And you can see I have the red circle around it here, so this is easy navigation for the public. We come to our main landing page, you can click on this for the local coastal program update, and it's going to take you to this next page, which is, again, a landing page. And there's a couple other tabs below what I'm showing here on this screen as well. But you can see that we have separated out the different studies, and you can click on those and be taken directly to tasks that may be associated with those, and also the standalone website for each one of those tasks. So this will hopefully improve the availability of the information to the public and make it easier to navigate to where we have LCP updates happening, because we're reaching the point where there's going to be quite a bit more stakeholder engagement happening. So we want to make sure it's easy to navigate. So next, I'll dive into some of the studies that we have. So the coastal groundwater study, we have completed tasks one through five, and those are outlined on the screen here. We also have a technical advisory group that is associated with the coastal groundwater study that has met and provided feedback on each one of these tasks as we've been working through those. We are currently working on revisions to the scope of work for what was originally intended to be tasks six through nine, and they're going to be revised to tasks six through eight. This revision was really necessary due to some of the results of some of the prior task work. What the consultant found was that there weren't these broad sweeping areas of the coastal zone that would fit into these groundwater classifications that we previously had, critical, marginal, sufficient, and found that it was much more site-specific. So some of the work that they had originally anticipated they would be able to do based upon having those more broad sweeping areas has to be adjusted. So we've been working through that scope of work with the Coastal Commission as well, making sure it still is in line and something that they will support as part of our grant agreement, so that way we can still receive reimbursement for that work being completed as well. And we anticipate that scope of work coming forward to the Board of Supervisors in December to approve those revisions. And that has resulted in us also extending the contract termination date with Larry Walker &amp; Associates to June 30, 2026. So some upcoming engagement opportunity is that the completed tasks are going to be released for public comment later this month. We'll be issuing a press release, as well as sending out notification to the individuals that are on our interested parties' email list, and I'll include the link to that at the end of my presentation. So that'll be an opportunity for folks to engage with those five tasks and be able to provide any comments, questions, et cetera, that they may have regarding those, and we'll review those internally and discuss with our consultant as necessary. For the traffic and highway capacity study, we have, the various tasks are outlined again on this slide. We have, we currently have an administrative draft from our consultants, so there's very limited information that's been completed at this point. They've completed the assessment of the existing policies, programs, and data, and then also did some model development. So we're going to be, again, providing those completed tasks on our website and make those available for comment as well, again, later this month. The press release is drafted, I'm just waiting to have that be sent out. And again, that'll go out as a press release and then notification to those individuals that have requested to be on the interested parties' email list as well. And the, again, this has just two tasks associated with it that's ready for release, but the larger study is currently under administrative review with our office.
Will you accept questions as you go through?
Yes.
Okay. Just hearing that you're updating your housing element, have you thought about rezoning as part of this LCP amendment for housing, or what's your thinking on that?
Unfortunately, the timing is a little challenging for us. So for the housing element, we have a, there's been a 250% increase in the RENA allocation to the County of Mendocino, and that's to the overall County of Mendocino, including the incorporated cities. So that won't be the portion that the unincorporated area is responsible for, but it's 6,456 units, I believe, for the overall county. And we expect that the, our unincorporated area will receive probably about 50% of that, maybe a little less. That's what we've seen, how the allocation has been done in the past. And with that, there may very well be rezoning considerations that'll need to be done. There was a new bill that went through as well that requires a level of consultation with the Coastal Commission as part of if you're identifying sites in the coastal zone for rezonings. So we'll engage with that, and I think this traffic study will be helpful to us in that, so we can see what kind of capacity we have if we're looking at any sites in the coastal zone to meet those numbers. But we're not quite at that stage yet. The timing just doesn't quite work out, I think, but this information will be helpful to any consultant we hire for the housing element.
I had a couple questions. For those who want to participate, how do they get on that list? Is that on our page?
It'll be on, at the very end, it is on the page as well, too. It's just very simple, they just shoot an email, too. We have a dedicated email address.
Because people have been asking me, and I said, "I'll find out."
Yeah, it's very simple, it's LCPupdate@MendocinoCounty.gov. And it's available on the website as well, it's an inbox that I monitor daily.
And, and then the other question I had, as far as, for instance, on the Highway 1 traffic study, if someone wants to contact the consultant involved, can they do that directly? How are we working that out?
Typically, they would contact county staff, rather than go directly to the consultant.
Okay.
Yeah. And we, of course, facilitate that communication back and forth with the consultant, but, you know, obviously, the consultants are working on behalf of the county, so really, that communication should come directly to the county.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, so moving on to our visual and archaeological resources study highlights. So the visual and archaeological resources study is actually pretty far along in its process. We've completed the background research, there was stakeholder outreach with pertinent state agencies and federal agencies that may have jurisdiction, they performed tribal consultation, have been continuing to engage with pertinent tribes throughout the process, and we did just hold a community meeting as well. There will be, again, release of tasks that have been completed coming up soon, and I'm going to get to that on our next slide here. So there was a visual and archaeological resources survey that was out to the public that closed on November 14, and we are currently awaiting a summary of the responses from our consultant. And depending what format that comes in, we'll also provide a summary of that on our website as well. There was a community workshop held on November 5. There is a video recording available of that workshop, it's also posted on our webpage. A list of the attendees and any questions that were raised, as long, as well as the video, can be found on that specific visual and archaeological resources update page. So, again, an upcoming engagement opportunity is that the completed tasks will be released to the public sometime next month. This one's going to be a little bit behind the other tasks, because we expect some new work products coming from them early in December. And a press release will also be sent out and notification to those on the interested parties' email list when those documents are available for comment and review.
So I had, I talked to, well, one, there were nine attendees, I guess, which is not large on a Zoom call for something of this kind of what I would call importance. And I've talked to a couple people of those nine, and, and that was a Zoom call. And I think the issue was on, you know, the survey that went out, was how do we, the question for it was like, well, there wasn't enough information, that's two of the main thing. Two is that the, of these two attendees, right, they said, they were trying to figure out, how do you add to, other than writing in a box, other areas that might need to be protected? And they felt that didn't really get much traction in the sense of feedback. So I, you know, I'm a little late to be getting involved, but I am, I and other people I've talked to want to get more involved, and this is great, what you said, we can do, get on the list, but, and the sooner we get your consultants' information, what they got from that survey, that'd be great, then we can address it.
Yeah, and, and thank you for that commentary, too, and I'll just note that there's going to be so many more opportunities for engagement, too. You know, that was an initial workshop, there's going to be discussions and meetings, but when we start working on policy development, on the implementation program, and then also the mapping that comes associated with all of this work as well. So those are, you know, three big components that, you know, we haven't released any draft maps, we haven't released draft policies at this point, and haven't released draft implementation program. But we have had, since that community workshop, I've received several different direct email correspondence from members of the public that have highlighted areas that they wish to have added to highly scenic designated areas or heightened protections. A lot of that has been focused around the Big River Estuary and the areas east of Highway 1. And then I know also I should be receiving, or I perhaps received it this morning, I didn't get a chance to look at all my emails, an extensive list from an attendee that was at that community workshop that had recommendations for up and down the coastal, our county coastal zone boundary for visual resource protection. So at any time, any member of the public, any individual can submit a, their comments to our office, if there's particular concerns they have or areas that they'd like to see highlighted, and we'll take those into consideration with the policy drafting and mapping. But, you know, even whatever the consultant produces is not necessarily the final documents that goes through a public hearing process. This Planning Commission will have opportunity for input on that, as well as the Board of Supervisors and the community at large.
And the Coastal Commission.
And the Coastal Commission, of course, yes. They ultimately hold the cards at the end of the day, they have the final say.
And I just want to say, because I, years ago, worked on the LCP, you want to get in early, because it's much harder to change something that's already mapped out or defined with consultants. That's, that's, that's harder. So that's, that's why I'm really happy we're having this sharing. Thank you.
Great. So in terms of biological and natural resources, the consultant did some agency and stakeholder engagement as well, and you can see I've listed some of those different groups that were consulted as part of that. They also provided some draft updated mapping to us, and we have been working with them on administrative draft of the biological resources survey report, including the recommendations for some of the LCP policies. So those are currently in administrative draft. That's why I don't have yet an engagement piece, because once we have a draft that we're comfortable with, then we will provide those out to the public, and we're going to use that same format that I mentioned, which is press release accompanied with an email blast to all those who wish to be on that interested parties' mailing list.
So just one stakeholder comment. If, as part of those LCP policies, we come up with a more rational way of dealing with non-native trees that are dead and dying, that would be awesome.
Well, you will be very pleased to know that was in the scope of work that we requested of the consultant, was recommendations on handling dead, dying, and diseased trees throughout our coastal zone, also looking at treating some of our rare plant communities in a way more similar to like, maybe like how we handle dune ecosystems, which is where you allow one single-family residence under mitigating conditions, rather than ending up in a takings analysis for all of these projects that are just, because of the site, they're located in the rare plant buffer or something like that, but they really do have a right to be able to be developed with it, you know, a reasonable-sized residence that's compatible with the sizes of adjacent properties and how they were developed. So getting at the property owner's investment-backed expectations, so.
Cool.
And then finally, we did bring on board the SEQA EIR consultant, however, their work is really kind of paused until we have some more of these completed tasks, but we wanted to have them engaged early, so that way we would be able to work with them on any data needs and things like that as well. We also have some work that's being completed internally related to this, and so the first task, Task 3.4, is related to coastal access and visitor-serving facilities, and our senior planner, Mark Kleiser, is the lead on this particular task. And right now, what we're working on is inventorying and mapping the existing shoreline and near-shore recreation areas and visitor-serving accommodations, just ensuring that our mapping is up to date, including any offers to dedicate that have been done since 1985. So we have some records that we have to go through and ensure that those are accurately shown on our maps, so that's a bit of an effort. And then also determining usage statistics and demand projections for day use and overnight visitor-serving facilities. So a key upcoming engagement opportunity is that we have a draft survey, we're going to be releasing that in just the next couple weeks to the public regarding coastal access and visitor-serving facilities, and we'll, again, send out a press release and do notification to those on the interested parties' email list. We also are going to be doing a very targeted survey that'll just go to our visitor-serving facilities themselves, which is asking them about some of their usage statistics and demand projections as well, just from what they've experienced over the last year in terms of usage at their site, and if they're seeing any particular trends that are happening as well. So trying to get the data from the people that are seeing it first and foremost. The secondary task that we currently have in progress is Task 3.3, which is the agricultural resources and development issues and policies, and senior planner Russ Ford, who's in the room with us, is the lead on this particular one. So this task is reviewing existing standards and data related to agricultural resources, developing recommendations for managing agricultural resources, develop updated mapping data for agricultural and rural lands in the coastal zone, develop measures for development on or affecting agricultural lands, and develop criteria for considering conversions of agricultural land, including diversification of income that would not result in loss of agricultural land or conversion to non-agricultural uses. So some of this work, Russ has been working on updated mapping, that's been kind of our first step, is looking at what we have for our updated mapping, and then he's working through these other tasks as well. We don't have a-
I just think it's great that you're using your own staff to do this, because nobody knows it better than the local people, and you don't have to fix consultant work then.
Yes. No, it's, it's great to have our staff involved, and I will say, each of the senior planners also have been given, you know, the latitude if they want to bring in any other junior staff to work with them, to please do so, and just get, you know, use our local knowledge, so. So some of our immediate next steps is continuing work with the various consultants on our tasks, and then responding to requests for any technical information from the consultants and supporting documentation in a timely manner, revising the grant agreement schedule with the Coastal Commission, and getting some Coastal Commission engagement on policy development, as is written into our grant agreement right now. They review policies at every step of the process, so they review any drafts likely before we even release those to the public as well to get their initial intake, input, and that way we're not having the community engage on policies that the commission is not on board with. And then we will also have community engagement on the policy development, and that's anticipated to start in early 2026, so that is just right around the corner, and we're expecting that that will probably start for some in January, others likely in February. So folks can expect to be hearing from us about those opportunities for engagement. Okay, so, well, I guess I'll back up. Are there any other questions on that comprehensive, those tasks that I just walked through from the commission? I mean, none at this time? Okay, then I'll go on to our rolling grant award. So the county also received a secondary rolling grant from the Coastal Commission, which was for the sea level rise vulnerability assessment, and this is a task that feeds into the comprehensive update, but it was handled through a separate, the separate rolling grant award from the commission. So we have our executed grant agreement, we received six different responsive proposals, and we actually reviewed those and scored those proposals with the City of Fort Bragg and also Sea Grant staff as well. And that's because there's work happening in the City of Fort Bragg as well for, they also received a grant from the Coastal Commission, and they're working on some sea level rise work for the Noyau Harbor specifically. And some of the work that they're doing is going to feed into some of the updates that we may pursue to our fishing village zoning and really looking at the needs of our harbor, our Noyau Harbor and the fishing industry and the other industries that may be down there as well. So we wanted to make sure there was early engagement, that we were all reviewing each other's proposals and feeling confident with the consultant selected. So the awarded firm was Environmental Science Associates, and the Board of Supervisors approved that contract in September of last year. And we recently extended the grant termination date for this sea level rise vulnerability assessment to December 31, 2026. We expect that the work is going to come in, probably finalized documents around June of 2026, but we just wanted to leave some additional time on that contract as well for working with the commission staff, especially as some of the sea level rise policies, I understand from other jurisdictions in the coastal zone, can be- understand from other jurisdictions in the coastal zone, can be a bit sticky to work through with the commission, especially as it pertains to existing development and a definition of existing development. So we look forward to doing that. So some of the assessment highlights are that we'll have the existing conditions analysis and inventory memorandum. This task is actually complete, and we're going to be making that available very soon on our website as well for any comments that folks may have. Stakeholder outreach and public engagement, some stakeholder outreach has already begun by the consultant. And then we currently have the administrative draft of the sea level rise analysis and risk assessment document that is under review by county staff. And then the final document that comes out of this work is the sea level rise resilience strategy and policy development. There is an existing engagement opportunity, and this survey has been out for a number of months. And it's a Survey Monkey that was prepared by our consultants, and I know they've already had a pretty robust response to that, but if folks have not taken the opportunity to take it, please go ahead and take that survey. It's also the link available on our website and included here. So that is the update that I have. And as I have on this slide, if you would like to be placed on the interested parties' list, you just need to send an email to lcpupdate@mendocinocounty.gov, and we will make sure that you get added as a, one of the members on there. We currently have 36 individuals that are on that interested parties' list, and I expect that to continue to grow. And just one other note, too, our office regularly participates in the Grassroots Institute meetings that are held every two months. On actually today's day, we have one this afternoon, beginning at 3:00 PM. And those are open generally, and we provide an update every two months, and any members of the public can participate on there, and they have certainly questions and comments. And it's a great opportunity for engagement with multiple agency. It's not just the county that's there, the City of Fort Bragg, and representatives of City of Point Arena, and then also they have groups from like Project Here that participate as well as, and the Coastal Commission. I am available for any questions.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments from?
Well, again, I just want to emphasize how great it is that you're using your own team because I really think that that is where the good work happens, myself and my experience. And I look forward to seeing the work product as it comes out and helping shape it, if possible.
I concur, and I think, because your team ultimately is going to be putting the package together, so I think it's great, you know? And you are very knowledgeable. I mean, we live on the coast and are knowledgeable, so. And I look forward to the process because it's always lovely to protect our coast.
Thank you. Commissioner Richards?
Inland people.
Coastal schmostel. Great, no, it is great. It's exciting to see that this process is being supported and that there's some great funding coming from outside the county to help support us to do this very important work. Oh, you got something else to say? Yeah?
Why, am I being too quiet?
No, 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 please, speak up.
Must be my mood. Did I understand that some of this hasn't been updated since like 1984, like the inventory of assets?
Oh, yes. Holy cow. So our local coastal program, the coastal element was adopted in 1985, and then the zoning implementation program was adopted locally by our board in 1991, but we didn't actually take on coastal permit authority until 1992. We were supposed to update it five years after certification, and that has been delayed until now. So we have lots of catch-up work to do and lots of sort of, you know, modernizing to do with our code as well.
Thank you. All right, any other questions or comments from commissioners? Okay, we will invite the public to make comment on this item. Any members of the public? Anyone in the room? Anyone on Zoom?
No hands raised on Zoom?
And we didn't need, no telecomment or email or anything?
No telecomment received.
Great. All right, any final remarks from staff?
I'll just note to what I was just mentioning to Commissioner Richards, we are not the only coastal jurisdiction as well that is very, has very old plants. So it's something, it's such a challenging process, and it really is a significant lift when you start to undertake it, that I think we're seeing some LCPs getting updated, but a lot of times it's just minor, it's putting the Band-Aid on, it's addressing the state regulation that came through, it's not a holistic update, so.
Thinking about COVLOs.
And the first LCP that actually finally got adopted took about five years.
And having gone through and participated in the LCP update for the City of Fort Bragg, the Coastal Commission does also insert lots of regulatory changes and requirements on local communities when you do an LCP amendment. So there are sometimes communities don't update them on purpose. Right. There's a downside to it.
It is a huge job. I do understand that, so thanks.
Great. Okay, well, then I will close this item if there's nothing else from staff. All right, moving on, item 6C. We are looking for a nomination of one additional member of the planning commission to sit on the Airport Land Use Commission.
Well.
Wait a minute, you want to make the pitch again? I know, so do you want to make the pitch?
You know, usually it's somebody from Ukiah, and that seat is vacant. And I don't know when we're ready to, I mean, would it make sense to have a temporary person until we get a Ukiah? I don't think so. Or should we wait until we get a commissioner from Ukiah District?
I think that's certainly at the pleasure of the commission, of whether or not you want to appoint someone now or wait. I will say that we don't have any pending items right now for our Airport Land Use Commission. But it is just, it's a kind of administrative task since Laura Babini was the prior representative. So with her departure from the commission, as well as the, now the Airport Land Use Commission, there is a vacancy that does need to be filled, so.
Is there anybody who wants to serve?
Yeah.
Just going to say, if it's quiet, if their agenda is quiet, maybe we could do it on a month-to-month. Put it on the agenda every month to nominate someone if the agenda starts to get active.
I think that's certainly something that could be done, is just to leave it as a nomination. If the commission doesn't wish to take action, I'll let counsel.
Deputy County Councilman Matthew Gudrowski, just to kind of add to that, the nomination is just the first step from the commission. That person would then have to apply, you know, and send in that form to the board. So it wouldn't be an instant process, too. You know, if there's an ALAC meeting in two weeks, that might be a rush, so. But that being said, if we're not having any meetings at present, we can leave this on there for now and get back to you in two weeks and have a discussion further. It's an unknown when we're going to get a Ukiah Planning Commission, Commissioner's seat filled.
And the other thing I would just say for like a, trying to get another person on it, it hasn't really, we hardly meet now. We did a lot of meetings when we were updating the plan, right, the, for the county, especially the Ukiah. But that's been updated, so I don't foresee it being a really, a lot of work from, it hasn't been a lot of work in the last couple of years since we completed those plans. So not bad to be on.
I was just thinking about Mo's Facebook post where she was talking about seeing if anybody was interested in taking the seat, and I looked like it might be difficult, but I don't know.
Since no one is jumping up at the chance, maybe we just leave it vacant for now. And can I ask a question? Do we have a meeting in two weeks, just so I can plan?
December 18th? No, I think we do have a couple items tracking for December 18th, so, and I'll get with you after, too, because maybe that hasn't been properly entered in for your review. But we will, I think December 18th is the next meeting that I have. And that agenda will have a couple larger items on it.
Okay.
All right, well, it seems as if for the moment, we're not going to take any action on nominating. All right, moving on then. I need to take public comment on this one, do I? Does anyone in the audience want to speak? No?
And for the record, there are no hands raised on Zoom and no telecomment.
Great, thank you, all right. All right, moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven, matters from staff.
No matters from staff, thank you.
No matters from staff, all right. Agenda Item Number Eight, matters from the commission. Do any commissioners have any burning items they wish to bring forward?
Happy Tea Day.
Oh, yes.
Turkey Day.
Yes, thank you. All right, all right, then moving on to Agenda Item Number Nine, adjournment. I'll invite a motion to adjourn.
I still move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right. For adjourn, we'll see you at some point in the indefinite future.